Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Welcome everybody to the Town of Ponnell Select Board Meeting, January 27th at 7:00 PM. We need to call to order, approve the agenda, approve the minutes of January 13th, January 19th, January 20th, January 22nd. Warrants, correspondence, old business, Town Hall update, ARPA funding, FY23 general budget, Town of Ponnell warning 2022, public comment, and adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have any additions on the agenda?
Not as far as I know.
I was going to update you on the reply, just an email, nevermind.
Okay, nope, I guess not.
Okay, I think then, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Approval of minutes of January 13th, 2022, regular Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. January 19th, Select Board Special Meeting. I spoke to Megan about that. She just has to move your motion down, Mike. She put it that you made it in executive session and that was not true.
Right.
You made it when you came out of executive session, so she's going to fix that.
So moved with the change, direction.
Okay. Yeah, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of January 20th, Select Board Special Meeting.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Oh, like, second, I just can't forward on it, I guess.
Oh, that's right, you weren't here. Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Minutes of January 22nd, regular Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. Warrants, accounts payable, 121 to 128, for $28,215.05. Accounts payable for 126, $23,774.73. Accounts payable, 127, Town Hall, $37,271.55. Can I have a motion to accept the accounts payable?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Payroll, 118 to 121, for $9,985.12. Payroll, 128, for $11,837.49. Okay, entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so just for a quick sec, we want to open to public if they have any questions about accounts payable. Please raise your hand.
Yes, just very fast, I didn't see a payment in the warrant, and I looked very quickly, so maybe if Megan just can email what warrant was the final payment to the forensic audit, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, correspondence? There was none?
Yeah, I didn't see any emails.
Old business? None? Town Hall update, is that you, Mike?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll give a quick, short synopsis on where we're at. Eric emailed me, Eric Marshall emailed me on Tuesday. This is where we're at with the town office. All painting has been completed except the vault, which should be in a day or so. So that's probably done by now. The electrician is coming this week, whatever Monday, well, this was Tuesday, the, whatever the day was, 25th.
Okay, yep.
Whatever, I don't.
Today's 27th.
These are all this week, because today, yeah, so this was Tuesday, the 25th.
Yep.
Electrician's coming this week to fire up the basement level outlets and everything on the basement level. As far as flooring goes, the flooring guy just needs to complete the vinyl baseboard in some areas, in the walk-off mat area, he's out with COVID right now, so there's a little delay there. The plumbers are there this week, they were there on Tuesday, and the rest of this week to complete what they have left to finish up. In order to get a certificate of occupancy, Eric and I have been working on that, so that we can actually move in, we have to have a drop ceiling placed into the basement. So I gave him the go-ahead to order the materials on the drop ceiling. They can start working on that as soon as they get the materials, because we just got that last word. I believe the word came down from Fire and Safety last week, he sent me an email, but it was just in the last few days as to what we needed for the CO, we've been working with them, and it's been a little bit of a slow process, but not on our end. Chuck Watson will be there yesterday with Comcast, excuse me, to run the IT stuff and get that, start that installation process.
Internet's working.
I say internet's upright.
Just afternoon.
Up and running.
Nice.
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 So, yeah, this was a Tuesday email from Eric, giving me a heads-up, you know, we've all been pretty busy.
Yep.
Back and forth, so we haven't had a chance to meet, but obviously, we're keeping I'm just reading this real quick to see if there's a date when the Fire Marshal was down here. This is the email that Eric sent me about the Fire Marshal. Doesn't give me a date, but I know it was in the last, within the last week, is when the Fire Marshal was down and gave them what we needed for their certificate of occupancy.
Okay, great.
All right.
Sounds like it's moving along nicely.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're gaining every day. It's, you know, not as quick as what you would hope for, but it is moving along pretty quickly.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Are you all set?
Yep, that's all I have in the Town Hall.
All right, thank you. ARPA funding? Rebecca?
Do you want me to sit?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, I'm very cold.
That's okay, it's cold in here.
It's cold. So, the new ARPA rules came down from the ARPA people, and it's really, what they've done is they've, they've, they've really relaxed the rules so much, because this money is literally going to every town in the entire country, and so it's too much to, like, manage, you know, if everyone had to do all this extra, the reporting that you normally do with, like, grant funding. And so, we've checked with both the VLCT and Cynthia Nemrick, who's also been working very diligently on this, and we can take the ARPA funds, which we've already received, 509,000 and change, and all we have to do, we can use it forever, whatever we want, we can just put it in the general fund, which means it can be used for any infrastructure at your pleasure, like the Town Hall, the overages on the Town Hall, I mean, the intention is that, so we have that extra influx into our general fund to help things, like, you know, where we've had increases, things like that.
For seen.
Right, and then we're going to receive that second half of ARPA funding, and we have been receiving commentary, some comments from citizens through the portal that we set up in September on our website, and, but we're going to be getting that second half, the other 509,000 and change, for the second payment, and so there is another opportunity, I was going to, I was going to suggest to you, that you could start talking about creating a hearing system, you know, to, like, maybe have some public hearings with the, you know, maybe people have community projects for that, like, that second half, because I know you have already designated a large portion of this towards the pump house project, but I'll let you guys discuss that, but that's the new laws, we double-checked and triple-checked. You can spend that money as you see fit, it can be placed into the general fund, okay?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
With that great news.
So, on our, let me speak a little bit on the ARPA, because I've been working with on this, I started out with Tim a little bit on this. When Tim did his presentation of September of 2021, then Tim and I have been, you know, he was keeping me updated on some of the stuff. We, you know, we set up that portal so that we could receive input from the taxpayers, I think that was set up in September, if not, it was early October, I believe, and we have received some suggestions from different people in town, a few, it's not a great deal, but there was a few. One of the suggestions that, not one of suggestions, one of the things that we had talked about way back in October, because if I remember correctly, it was August, when I visited with Darcy, and when I met with Darcy, I didn't visit with her, I met with her.
Yep.
At the pump house down at Altus Gardens.
Mm-hmm.
That needs replacement.
Yep.
I talked to Darcy today to see where we are at on that pump house. That pump house will take, we can designate 100% of the funding for that pump house from ARPA funds. Darcy gave me a figure today of 300,000, she's pretty comfortable with that, to replace that pump house and pump station. So, I put a cushion in there in my own mind of 325. We have 509, 250, and 37 cents, or whatever it was, ARPA funds in our budget right now that we've already received. If we took out 325,000, it leaves about 174,000, a little over, 174, ARPA funding that we have available to us, that we don't have designated right now. Just for, just so that you guys know where we're at with the pump house, once again, that was kind of, I guess, I don't know if it was my project, it's Darcy's project, but I was the one that went down with her and went through the whole thing, and so I reached out to her today, she's very comfortable with that. That project, the pump house project, and we can talk about this, because it is ARPA funds, she's thinking is, hoping to have completed in July, August of this summer.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Hi.
She's, she's working with the engineers, so we're not, we're not far away from.
So they're close to writing an RFP then?
Yeah, they're, they're just putting some finalization stuff to it, she actually was supposed to meet, and I apologize, Darcy, I can't remember exactly what you told me yesterday or today, and the engineer had an emergency somewhere, the person she was supposed to meet with, so I'm pretty sure she told me it was today, and I, once again, I apologize, days are running together right now for me. So that's where we're at with, with ARPA funding, we still have $174,000 available to us from the first go-round.
Yep.
And that's taking out the, which I said, like I said, I rounded it to 325 for incidentals, contingency, whatever, in my own mind, she told me 300, I bumped it to 325, because, you know, I'd hate to be short, and not, you know.
Right.
Not be prepared.
Yep.
Just my own thoughts.
Especially with the price of things.
We have, right, we haven't, you know, obviously, we haven't discussed this as a board, but, because I just got these numbers from her today, probably about 12:15 today, actually, when we touched base, and I was eating my lunch.
But before I get, I also have something to say about ARPA, that it's another, you can do it after, but another update regarding the consultation service, I want to make sure we speak about that publicly.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, you want to talk about that now, because I was gonna do it?
Sure.
Yeah, let's, let's bump that up, because I was ready for.
Okay.
That was, that's about all I have on the ARPA right now.
Oh, okay.
Until we get to budget.
Okay, so what, what I was going to say is that, we had, we had been doing research to see if we could find a consulting company that would help us manage these ARPA funds, that was under the assumption that these ARPA funds would be these really, really, really strict rules, really complicated rules, the trainings that we had attended were, like, the people, teaching the trainings didn't even fully understand, it's very complicated, but now it's so simplified, but we finally got in touch with a consulting service that was recommended to us by the BRCRC.
Yep.
And they were like, we're booked out, we're not taking on any more clients, they said, but listen, it just got so simplified, he's like, you can just put it, that's where we got that, you can just put it in the, the general budget, you really don't need that sort of management, anything under 10 million can just be added to the general budget without much finagling. Now Cynthia Nemrick offered, she says that they, they are, they could help us, probably just in a few hours, set up our books, too, so we can track the spending of our ARPA money internally.
We put, we make it a line item.
It is a line item already.
Subtext of what we're.
Right, but it could be moved under the general fund, but Cynthia said she'd be happy to help us just set up a very simple accounting system, so that we have our, for our auditors, right, you know, so we know where that money came from, and we can internally track how we're spending that ARPA, that ARPA funding. So, as of right now, we don't really need the big consultants anymore at this point, but there are services that can help us just stay on top of it, make sure it's being managed, and certainly, running a public hearing process, Megan and I can, can make that happen, that's not a problem. Okay?
Thank you, Rebecca.
Right, so, to just go in on that, because I think, I think we need to, I think we need to make a motion as a board on this.
Right.
Tonight, and take care of that. We reached out to Jim Sullivan, BRCRC.
Yep.
Jim has a couple of people, he sent us back an email, that could help us, point us in the right direction. He also gave us the name of Whiten Burke, which is the consulting firm that Bennington is using, he also pointed us in the direction of the VLCT. Since we have talked to Jim, that's when all this other stuff kind of, kind of happened with, when, you know.
Rules changing?
Yeah, the rules being a little, you know, quite a bit less stringent, since, since we reached out to Jim the last time we talked about the ARPA funding. So, I think, in my mind, it makes perfect sense for us to go with Nemrick.
I agree.
To have an accounting system set up, because Nemrick is, is very familiar with our books.
Absolutely, and they already help tremendously.
And, and, and our accounting system and how things happen here.
Yep.
So, I'd like to move that we, I don't know if we enter into a contract, enter into an agreement, with Nemrick to set up this accounting for the ARPA funds, and ARPA funding can pay, if I'm not mistaken, ARPA funding can pay Nemrick for.
The services.
For the services, that's right.
Also, you don't have to, just so you know, you can just ask me to look into that, and I can come to you with a plan, like, you don't have to vote on that tonight, you could just ask me.
Well, that's true.
Come to you with it, you know?
Yeah.
But do we have to vote tonight to put that, add it to our general ledger? The ARPA money?
No, because it's already in there.
Okay.
No, no, you guys, you guys, you should determine, you can determine that is your intention to spend that first payment, if you plan to spend it on a pump house, and I would be taking votes on that, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, when it comes time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, because I think we need a concrete number first, before, you know, these are just, these are just hypotheticals that, you know, Darcy and I, you know, she doesn't have a concrete number, I don't have, so I don't have a concrete number. The only concrete number that I can give you right now is the 509, 250 and change, or 249, or whatever it is, and change, that's ARPA money, the rest of it is all kind of shooting from the hip, but not really.
Right.
So, I'll move that we look into.
Having Rebecca.
Having Nemrick give us a idea on the, what we need to do for the accounting part of.
Proper setup.
The proper setup for our accounting, for our ledgers and stuff, for, for the ARPA money.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, are you all set now, Mike?
Oh, yeah, that's all I have for ARPA money right now.
Okay, so now we can move on to FY23 general budget. Since we got the great news about the ARPA. You want to jump right there?
No, no, I don't want to jump into that right, right off the bat, what I'd like to do is, is, I'd like to start with the budget that we came up with, because I think that's really important to start with, the budget that we worked on.
Right.
And worked really hard on to come up with, after our initial budget was.
Right.
Kind of, kind of so far out of whack.
Yes.
Fiscal year 2022 budget was 616,436.81.
Yep.
The proposed fiscal year 2023 budget is 654,081.37, which gives us a difference of $37,645. That's the increase from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023 on, on this budget. The ballot articles from fiscal year 2022 were 268,740. The ballot articles for fiscal year 2023 were 324,740, and I didn't, I apologize, I didn't do the math on that one, because those are, of what the difference is, yeah, if you want to, because those are, those ballot articles, in my mind, are out of the Select Board's control, we, we only control the general budget, the taxpayers and voters in the town control the ballot articles.
66,000.
I can't even find my calculator, 66,000?
Yeah, well.
Yep, that looks right, so the ballot article increase.
66,000.
From 2022 to 2023, looks like it's roughly $66,000. Out of that $66,000, $38,000 of that is the.
Kennel.
Uh, kennel.
Yep.
Which, so that brings us to, 20, what did I say, 38?
Yeah, 38.
28.
Yeah, to 28.
So the ballot articles themselves, minus the kennel, are, there's an increase of $28,000 in ballot articles alone, which, like I said, they're totally out of our control in, in my mind.
Yeah.
What it is, it's true, we don't control that.
Right.
Sewer bond stays the same. The local agreement EDU tax went down $1,000. So the total general fund went from 1,013,676.81, if I'm reading the numbers right.
Yeah.
It's because it's a little.
Libya.
It's a little, it's a little blurry, to 1,108,321.37. Now, there's a, with, with the ballot articles. And I gotta.
What are you thinking?
Well, thinking we probably should have inverted the warning in the ballot articles on the agenda, but we didn't, because I believe that, I believe that Article 5 on our warning of shall the town authorize $100,000 from the general fund fiscal year 21, undesignated surplus, to be applied to the municipal office fund for the construction of the town office. I believe we can do away with Article 5, I believe we can take that $100,000 of undesignated surplus funds, and I believe we can apply it to the general fund, 654,081, and make that 554,81, which drops our budget a little over $62,000 from fiscal year 22.
And that's using $100,000 from ARPA funds, I just want to make sure people understand.
No.
No?
No, that's not.
Capital.
From, that's undesignated surplus funds.
Sorry, yes.
So what, so what, and you're, you're correct, I think you just got a little bit confused.
Yep.
Because, because it would be using $100,000 from our ARPA money to apply, or to, to be used to the town office.
Right.
So we would take $100,000, undesignated surplus, that, that we're proposing initially, before tonight, to finish the town office, now we're giving back that $100,000 to the taxpayers as well.
Yep.
And taking $100,000 of our, of our initial 509 ARPA money, and applying that to the town office, so we're just switching the 100 grand, basically.
So then, we're gonna have to change the other article, if that's what we choose, because we add the $100,000 on the, using it towards the.
Yeah, you're talking about returning it to the taxpayer, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So you'd have to change that number, too, for instance.
60.
No, it was, it was 117, right?
Yes.
Right here, to be raised taxes by 117,483.63, correct? On Article 9? And the wrong article.
Yes, we would have to change, so, so Article 9, yes, you're absolutely right, Jamie, Article 9 would then have to be changed, it would be, shall the voters appropriate $1,200,913 for the general expenses of the town, of which 683,581.37 is to be raised by taxes, and 217,483.63 from prior year undesignated surplus funds.
So we got to change this, too.
So that whole, Article 9 would change as well as Article 5, that's, that's absolutely right.
So we got to make a motion to eliminate Article 5.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
First, and then add it to the, make a motion, separate motion to.
Add it to Article 9.
Yes.
Right, my only, my only concern is, and it may, it may be unjustified here, to be honest with you guys, but it's just my head thinking, because this news just came in again today, it's, it's like, you know, this stuff is spinning all the time.
But we have number 10 as Town of Ponnell warning.
Right, I'm just, I'm, so what I'm worried about is, what I'm worried about is, is taking, is dropping our general budget to 584 and change, and then, next year, you know, who knows, you know, all of a sudden, we take a huge jump because of whatever happens, but I guess that's a chance that we would have to take, or should probably take, after I think about it. You know, it's really nice to, it's really nice to have, to have that fiscal year 2022 budget at 616, and then we can come in here fiscal year 23, and say, we just, we just dropped your budget in one year, $62,000.
Right.
Okay, on the surface, that's awesome.
Right.
And, and I hope that it stays that way. I just have that little pit in my stomach that says, man, you know, this could, this could really be, and I don't think it will, I guess what it's gonna do, it's gonna make us tighten our belts and stay there next year, I don't know.
Well, not just that, because we discussed possibly only doing 50,000, but with, in lieu of, this is only the first payment of the ARPA money.
Right, we still get another 5.
Already agreed to take and do the town office and stages, so we.
Look, it.
Offset the, so I think that, what we previously stated, I think, I'm hoping that we're gonna be safe there.
Look, I'm that person, Jamie, I'm that person, that I don't spend money, that I don't have in my hand.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, we're promised 509, or whatever the number is, for the next batch of ARPA money.
Right.
We're promised it. Okay, these are politicians we're dealing with, I'm not a politician, I'm terrible at it, okay, I really believe that I am, maybe I'm not, but I really believe I'm terrible being a politician, if I'm gonna spend $500, I'm gonna have $500 or $510 in my pocket, that's just me, you know, I, I, so I have to look at it that way.
I understand, and I, I agree with, because we never know what they're gonna, if they'll change their mind.
Never know. Never know. But it's been promised, but you know, we are dealing with politicians.
Under the situation where the COVID and everything else, to give the taxpayers, um, a little bit of light in it.
I'd love to.
I mean,
I haven't, I
If we're able to, I think that's a good thing.
I'm not gonna disagree with you. I just have that pit in my stomach that's telling me, man, this is a hard pill to swallow.
Can I just?
No, no, no. No, sorry, Jim. This is, this is for board discussion.
Just don't decrease the budget.
Please stop, Jim. Okay, where are we?
You know, I, I just, that's, that's the pit in my stomach.
No, I, I understand that, and I've lived it with working for the state where they've taken stuff away.
Right.
Because of product, you know, the way projects happen.
Yep.
I, I really, I really and truly personally would feel way more comfortable um, if we took i- i- if we even took fifty thousand instead of a hundred thousand and gave, and gave, and split that a hundred in half. That, that would make me feel more comfortable than, than taking that whole hundred thousand dollars. That's just, but that's just me, guys. I'm one vote here.
No, but, I mean, this is why we have these conversations.
Exactly.
And that would change the final number if we did that.
It'd be six oh four.
Yeah, but I'm, I mean, the one million, it'd be one million, uh, fifty-eight roughly.
Yeah, I, I just look at the
Six oh four includes ballot articles?
No.
No.
Right, so all you're doing is taking out a ballot article, right?
Right.
If that's what you're proposing.
Well, we could take out
Not taking, you're not lowering the actual budget. If the six, you're taking that one hundred, you're just knocking out a ballot article, not taking it from budget.
Money that we're asking the voters to appropriate, either to put back in the general fund to offset the taxes or to put towards the town office. So if it's going, if it's going into the general fund to offset, then it, it doesn't raise that budget line item.
Right, right. No, I hear you. I just wanna make sure you know that, right.
So, no, I, with, with unforeseen circumstances, I mean, I, I can, I agree both ways. I, that's part of me wants to be able to give the taxpayers back as much as we can during the timeframe. With the price of materials and stuff and not having hard numbers for the future.
Right, cause we still have to.
Well, I mean, we're, we're hoping to finish
Finish the building.
That, we gotta move the
I mean, but that was all in the budget.
No, I understand that. I'm just speaking aloud as far as, you know, the cost of materials. I mean, some stuff is starting to fluctuate a little bit and, or regulate back. But there's a lot of stuff that still is crazy for infrastructure means.
Cause even if we take the hundred thousand, just saying, or the fifty thousand, we'd still have seventy-four thousand left in the five hundred and nine ARPA funds from taking out the hundred thousand and giving, um, Darcy the three twenty-five for the pump house project.
Right.
I, but I'm trying to think with that money not really being there.
So you're
I guess it's where par- partially. Cause that's like a little nest egg.
Right. But then you're gonna have other residents that say they gave you that money. Why didn't you use that money towards the taxes?
Our utilization.
I know.
You're, you're, um, to your point, Jamie, on the bottom line, is that, uh, the, the bottom line general fund total taxes, last year fiscal year twenty twenty-two were a million thirteen thousand six, excuse me, six seventy-six.
Yes.
Yes.
If we, if we were to split the hundred thousand dollars in half.
Take off.
Okay, the, then, then the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, bottom line with all of the ballot articles
Mm-hmm.
Would go up forty-four thousand six hundred and forty-four, six hundred and forty-five dollars.
Right.
Okay, bottom line, the bottom line, the budget would increase with all ballot articles, which we have no control over.
Right.
Would increase forty-four, six forty-five, which is basically the cost of the kennel plus six grand.
Right.
Okay, so, so, which would make it, um, it would make it one million fifty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and some change. I don't care about the pennies, so.
Twenty-one thirty-seven.
Right.
I think that's feasible.
I just, I just
Just because of unforeseen shit.
I, I'm just a little nervous about taking the whole
Sugar.
The whole ARPA mon- money, uh, you know, because, because I'm, I'm really scared if we had to do something next year and the budget goes crazy and then, and then we're looking at a twenty-something percent increase like we were this year, and then we don't have control over it.
Right.
Then, then we're really in a bind. That's, that's my concern. I'm, I'm just, I got that pit in my stomach. I don't know, you know, maybe it's, and I, and I believe me, I hope it's unjustified, but it's just there.
Yep.
You can always also, like, if you're still leaving a ballot measure of fifty thousand, it may not even pass. You don't, you know, it may pass, it may not pass, and you can also still later decide to use the ARPA money for the town hall. Like, it's, this does not prevent you
From using it down the road.
Using the ARPA money for town hall if that is what you choose to do.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
You might wanna take comment.
All right.
So I, I do think Rebecca's right. Um, now that, I, I, I'm done with my discussion on this. I don't know if you guys are, cause it's your meeting.
Right.
I'm just, I'm done with my points on this and what I think.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I played both ways. I, you know, everything that went through my head today is, I just laid it on the table. I know that, you know, you guys haven't had as much time as I have to think about this. Um,
But that would still mean take Article Five off, correct?
No, we would change Article Five from a hundred
Thousand to fifty thousand.
That's right. And then we would change Article Nine by fifty thousand dollars.
Preset by fifty, yep.
So, um, I, I think Rebecca's right, and that was gonna be my point, um, was to take public comment on this. And, um, I don't, I don't think we have to limit it to three minutes, but I would like to limit it to one
Person.
One comment per person.
All right. So Megan, we're gonna open up for public comment, and this public comment is about the budget.
About this one particular, not the budget itself.
This particular issue.
That particular issue, correct.
Right.
Okay, I think that's, and I think that's probably the way to handle it.
Right.
Just my opinion. I mean, if you guys are done, then I'm
Jamie, are you all set to open up for public comment?
Yeah, I'm trying to hear, hear what they have to say.
Okay, remember to please state your name and raise your hand if you have a comment.
Jim? Hi, guys. I'm sorry I had to interrupt it before, but first of all, you started out really, really great on this whole thing, but I appreciate what you're trying to do, but there is no need to decrease your budget. Your budget is the one million three hundred thousand. You can leave that, the one million three hundred thousand and protect yourself for any costs that could come up. The bottom line is, if you're not gonna designate the, or the hundred thousand towards the building, then what you're doing is basically only increasing on that ballot article, the hundred and seventeen would now become two hundred and seventeen. And then your other figure of seven eighty-three would decrease, and their taxes would go down to seven eighty-three, or six eighty-three. So you're telling the tax, you're telling the taxpayers, you wanna give them the two hundred and seventeen thousand undesigned funds. All that will be needed to be collected in taxes is six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, and your budget would stay the same at one million three hundred thousand. And then the hundred thousand that you are earmarking towards from, um, the, the government would just go towards the building. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please raise your hand.
That's, so, let me clear, let me, let me do, hold on one second.
Sorry.
Um, Megan, sorry, Donna, Jim's absolutely correct on that. I was wrong. Um, the budget, the, the one million three hundred thousand dollar figure would not change.
So that's
That would stay one point three million.
I'm running out of room of writing there, mister.
It would stay one point three nine thirteen.
Right.
Uh, you're absolutely right, Jim. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Then, um, so the only thing that would change are the other two
Which is six eighty-three and two seventeen.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. He's absolutely correct.
Okay, all right. Now, Donna, you pleased me? Go ahead.
Hi, um, I, I guess my question is, not knowing all about the ARPA funds, is, is there a designated timeframe? So for example, if you had that money, money set aside for a project, do you have a certain amount of time in which you have to spend that money or use that money?
No, I believe not.
Well, I, I think there is, I, I believe there is a deadline on some of it, but it's, it's, uh, four or five years out or something like that. Is that right, Megan? I know you've been working on this.
They removed the all, they
They did remove that too, though.
All, they removed all regulations. If you choose the quote, it's called the lost revenue option, which is where you turn this money into your general fund. It is now yours to use and fund what you see
Fit.
To fund, yes.
As long as you want.
No more federal reporting once you've taken that option.
Okay.
Really?
That just seems too simple.
I know, every town in the whole country.
Okay.
So that's why they're doing it that way. At ten million, people, these bigger municipalities have a lot more hoops to jump through.
Okay.
We do not.
We do not. Okay, Donna, did that answer your question, and did you have anything else to add?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Please raise your hand. Nobody, Meg?
There's no one else raising their hand.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Yes, thank you. All right.
I'm leaning towards the fifty thousand, just because I don't like surprises. That's what I was kinda thinking in the beginning anyways, but make a motion to change Article Five to, from one hundred to fifty thousand to the general fund.
So you wanna change Article Five to fifty thousand from the general fund?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so the article, just so that we're clear, Jamie, the article would read, shall the town authorize fifty thousand dollars from the general fund fiscal year twenty-one undesigned surplus to be applied to the municipal office fund for the construction of the town office.
Correct.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. So we've changed Article Five to fifty thousand.
I would have changed Article Nine.
So Article Nine. So do we have to take?
I, I think I do the, read the town warning first, and then change it as we go to that article.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we done with the budget part? Do you wanna move on to the town panel?
Yeah, I think, I think our budget, so, so that's gonna put our current general taxes to six hundred and four thousand dollars if that article passes.
Six hundred and four thousand eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Right.
Okay.
I'm with the federal government. I don't round all that stuff off when you do your taxes, okay? And the other stuff's irrelevant to me.
Okay, moving on to the town panel warning two thousand twenty-two. So do you wanna read every single article? We don't need to read, well, I guess we do.
You wanna read them or you gonna read them?
Read them.
Read them, all right. You wanna read them? You want me to read them?
I'll read them.
Okay, go ahead. You like to talk.
Yeah, I'm clear at it. I got a big mouth.
We know that.
And, and I don't stay quiet very much. Um, town panel warning twenty twenty-two, and I think, I think when we get to the ar- to Article Nine, I think we should discuss that.
Yep.
Okay. The inhabitants of, the inhabitants of the town of Pono qualified to vote in the town meeting are hereby notified and warned to be at the Pono Elementary School in said town on Monday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty PM in the afternoon, and on Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty-two, for Australian ballot voting at the Pono Center Firehouse to vote for the following issues and candidates. Moderator one year, selectmen for three years, selectmen for one year, selectmen for one year. So just looking at this, I, I don't know, I, I almost think that should be changed to select person from, for each, each, for select person for three years, select person for one year, select person for one year. Just my opinion. Auditor for three years, auditor for two years, auditor for one year, lister for one year, trustee of public monies for two years, trustee of public monies for two years. The floor meeting on February twenty-eighth will open at the Pono Elementary School at seven thirty PM for Articles one through two, then staying adjourned until ten AM at the Pono Center Firehouse for Australian ballot voting on Articles three through thirty-six. Polls will be opened from ten AM till seven PM. Ballots will be available to all active registered voters. You will have the option to vote in person, mail your ballot back, or drop off at the town office. I think that's a, that's a huge key. It's all active registered voters. Articles to be voted on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, to hear reports of town officials and take action thereon. Article two, to see if the voters will authorize the treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. Articles to be voted March first, twenty twenty-two, the election of all officers required by law. Article four, shall the town provide notice of the availability of the annual report by postcard mailed to all registered voters at least thirty days before the annual meeting instead of mailing or otherwise distributing the report to the voters of the town pursuant to twenty-four VSA sixteen eighty-two A. Article five is what we changed already. Shall the town authorize fifty thousand dollars from the general fund fiscal year twenty-one undesigned surplus to be applied to the municipal office fund for the construction of the town office? Excuse me. Article six, shall the town authorize the elimination of the office of town auditor with future audits to be provided by a public accountant license in this state in accordance with seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one B A. Article seven, shall the voters prohibit the town constable from exercising any law enforcement authority in accordance with twenty-four VSA nineteen thirty-six A A. Article eight, shall the voters authorize the elimination of the office of town listener in accordance, in accordance with seventeen VSA twenty-six fifty-one C B one? Replace it with a professionally qualified assessor who's hell, who shall have the same powers, discharge the same duties, proceed in the discharge thereof in the same manner, and be subject to the same liabilities as are prescribed for listers or the board of listers under the provision of Title th- uh, thirty-two. Article nine, shall the voters appropriate one million three hundred thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars for the general expenses of the town? This is the way I read right now, of which seven hundred and eighty-three thousand five eighty-one thirty-seven is to be raised by taxes and a hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-three cents from prior year undesigned surplus funds.
Okay, so we wanna change it, though.
Well
Add the fifty thousand to it.
Right.
Make it a hundred and sixty-seven four eighty-three sixty-three.
Not that I don't trust your math, but I just wanna make sure.
That's fine.
Right? Because I wanna make sure we're accurate, Jamie, that's all. What'd you come up with, one sixty-seven four eighty-three sixty-three?
Yep.
I mean, I know it's simple math, but
I know, it's, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we say measure twice, cut once.
So that's gonna change to seven eighty-three to seven thirty-three.
Seven thirty-three five eight one thirty-seven.
Yep.
So if we so choose So if we so choose, the new article would read, shall the voters appropriate one million, three hundred thousand, nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the general expenses of the town, of which seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents is to be raised by taxes and a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-three cents from prior year, undesignated surplus funds.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Okay.
Article Ten, shall the voters appropriate one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars for the maintenance and construction of highways of the town, of which eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and four cents is to be raised by taxes and a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-four cents from prior year, undesignated surplus. Shall the voters appropriate eleven thousand dollars to Bennington Area Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice for providing health care to individuals residing in the town? Article Twelve, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars to Bennington County Conservation District? Article Thirteen, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars to Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse, a not-for-profit agency? Article Fourteen, shall the voters appropriate two thousand dollars to Bennington Free Clinic? Article Fifteen, shall the voters appropriate two thousand dollars to Bennington Project Independence for comprehensive in-person adult day services to panel residents? Sixteen, shall the voters appropriate eighteen hundred dollars to Brock Community Action in southwestern Vermont for crisis fuel and food shelf assistance? Article Seventeen, shall the voters appropriate six hundred dollars to Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and volunteer? Uh, should only say one volunteer program. I believe. Shall the voters appropriate six hundred dollars to Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program for the supportive services rendered to the residents of the town? Article Eighteen, shall the voters appropriate two hundred dollars to Vermont Green Up for the supportive services rendered to the residents of the town? Nineteen, shall the voters appropriate six thousand dollars to Oak Hill Children's Center? Twenty, shall the voters appropriate sixty thousand dollars to Panel Fire Protective Association for operations, insurance, and maintenance? Twenty-one, shall the voters appropriate fifty thousand dollars to the Panel Rescue Squad Incorporated for operations, insurance, and maintenance? Article Twenty-two, shall the voters appropriate fifty-two thousand dollars to Panel Valley Fire Department for operations and maintenance? Article Twenty-three, shall the voters appropriate nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars to Panel Valley Fire Department for the Fire Trucking Equipment Fund? Article Twenty-four, shall the voters appropriate twenty thousand dollars to Panel Valley Fire Department for the building fund? Article Twenty-five, shall the voters appropriate three thousand dollars to Panel Youth Baseball for the support of the baseball and soccer programs? Article Twenty-six, shall the voters appropriate five hundred dollars to Project Against Violent Encounters for the supportive services rendered to residents of the town? Article Twenty-seven, shall the voters appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to Solomon Wright Library for operations and maintenance? Article Twenty-eight, shall the voters appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to Solomon Wright Library for the support of a director? Article Twenty-nine, shall the voters appropriate twelve hundred dollars to southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging for the support of services rendered to the residents of the town? Article Thirty, shall the voters appropriate five thousand dollars to Sunrise Family Resource Center, a not-for-profit agency for the support of services rendered to the town? Thirty-one, shall the voters appropriate twenty-five hundred dollars to the Tutorial Center for the support of adult education literacy to the residents of the town? Thirty-two, shall the voters appropriate four hundred and forty dollars to Vermont Center for Independent Living for support people with disabilities in town? Thirty-three, shall the voters appropriate two thousand dollars to Panel Valley Swinging Seniors for services provided to the residents of the town? Article Thirty-four, shall the voters of the town of panel vote to appropriate thirty-eight thousand dollars for a town kennel to provide the animal control officer with an adequate structure to house unclaimed and/or stray animals? Article Thirty-five, shall the voters of the town of panel vote to dissolve the Woodlot Timber Fund and transfer the balance of twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar, or three hundred and twenty-six dollars to the capital fund for the future needs of the town? So let me read that again because I screwed up the amount. Shall the voters, Article Thirty-five, shall the voters of the town of panel vote to dissolve the Woodlot Timber Fund and transfer the balance of twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars to the capital fund for the future needs of the town? Do we want to explain that now or? What do you guys want to do with that or explain it on town meeting night?
You explain some town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting.
That's what I thought. Article Thirty-six, shall the voters appropriate sixteen thousand dollars to Panel Rescue Squad Incorporated for workers' compensation insurance dated at panel Vermont on this twenty-eighth day of January, twenty twenty-two?
Very much.
For reading. Okay.
That is, that is the town upon a warning twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Yep.
So can I entertain a motion?
I'll move that we approve that warning with the, um, changes that we made tonight.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. We're after public comment. If anybody has public comment, please raise your hand and please remember to state your name. Thank you.
Jim Winchester?
Jim Winchester, Scarborough Road, six thirty. I'd like to switch gears a little bit to X Oikman Bizan. I'm sure over the years, there's a lot of things been said about the guy, some good, some bad, maybe a little bit of this and that, but never to the level of being racist. And, uh, I enjoyed working on the planning board and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Jim.
Mindy Jo?
Mindy Jo, Burdick Park. Um, I do have comments about Mr. Bizan. I don't understand. I mean, political correctness is weakening us. How it's has been. The fact that somebody's feelings get hurt and a man that's spent forty years of his life trying to help his community because somebody's feelings got hurt. I want to know, when your feelings get hurt, do you die? Do you get cancer? Do you drop dead? What happens to you when your feelings get hurt? Nothing. Feelings changed. Facts, however, do not. And I think it's a total misjustice to have somebody resign over somebody's feelings. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. You as well. Anybody else? Please raise your hand.
Jim?
Hi, guys. Um, first of all, I, I appreciate.
Thank you, please.
I'm sorry. And Jim Coase's Mason Hill Road. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
First of all, Mike, I, I just want to thank you very much for, um, allowing me to speak before and, um, but the one question I have is, um, I, at first I was disappointed that, um, the motion was made to decrease the hundred thousand dollars down to fifty. Um, because that is the, um, taxpayers designated or undesignated funds that are being kept from them and being moved to the town office when, on one hand, the, there, there is adequate funds out in that, um, um, federal funds that will take care of that whole thing. Um, that was my first thinking. And then I, I started thinking about it and say, okay, um, well, think about what's been happening over the last couple of years. Our budget has been increasing, increasing and increasing. And we're at the point of last year, there was a close to two hundred thousand dollars, undesignated fund. And this year, if you take the road, undesignedated and the general, we're up to a four hundred thousand dollars in undesignated funds. Um, when someone looks at that, they kind of imply, it, it kind of implies that we're over budgeting and not spending the money. And, um, we're having up with this undesignated fund. So I, I, I'm going to let the fifty thousand dollars go there with the idea that I hope that, and I'll advocate for that Article Five, with the hopes that when you guys start thinking about the future, maybe there are some funds in that federal funding that could go to a reserve fund to help offset the increase in taxes. Um, things are just starting to increase over and over and over again. And now when we get to the, a fund balance of quote, or undesignedated to four hundred thousand dollars, you start to wonder, why is the budget keep going up? And then all of a sudden, we have undesignedated funds, which are not being used to decrease the taxes. So somewhere the taxpayers are paying a little too much extra. So I, I'm not going to advocate what you should do. I think it's just something, it's got to be a discussion in the next year or two years, just to kind of keep an eye on what is happening with the budget, what is happening with the undesignedated. I thank you very much. You guys got a lot of work to do ahead of you guys. And, um, I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll turn out okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Good night.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please raise your hand.
Donna?
Hi, Donna Lozon. I just wanted to say, uh, Mike, thank you for doing that breakdown of the ballot articles. I think, um, it's really important for folks, taxpayers, when they go in to vote to sort of get a heads up before they go vote of if everything passes, this is what our costs will be. Um, and perhaps for the first time, we actually get to see that in real time that, you know, it's a hundred dollars here, five hundred dollars there. But I, I really do appreciate you guys taking the time to do that breakdown. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Anybody else? Please raise your hand. Anybody else, Meg?
There's no one else raising their hand.
Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I, I want to say one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Just before we adjourn quickly, um, I do, I see Jim's point on the undesignedated funds. There's a couple of ways to look at it. Um, in, in my mind, one way to look at it is, um, yep, we're, we're asking for X number of dollars each year as, as a board. Um, there's a couple of things it's telling me, our road fund of almost two hundred thousand dollars coming back tells me that Joel comes in with his budget of X number of dollars. And he's did, he's done a tremendous job of keeping himself under budget. There's no doubt about it. Um, the same thing with what we did this year. Um, without, without the ARPA money, um, without the, without the money, you know, uh, without the ARPA money, our budget would have increased a little bit. There's no doubt about it. Um, but still, I think, I think our budget and then being able to give back to two hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and sixty-seven at this point um, from, from the town's perspective. So the road, Joel was able to give back from the road budget gave back to the taxpayers. Uh, I don't remember the exact number. It was a hundred and eighty-seven and change, I believe, went directly back to the taxpayers. I also think that they did a great job on the roads. And I don't think anybody's going to question that. That's not my point. My point is, um, yeah, we have to budget and maybe, maybe we do need to look at those budgets and, and maybe we are over budgeting. Maybe we should next year or this next fiscal year, maybe we should find out, look at the budgets pretty tightly and find out where all of the undesignedated funds, the majority of them are coming from. Okay. And I, I think that's a very valid point that he makes. Um, but I also want to say that I think as a, as a whole, um, our wastewater, our transfer station and our road crew, um, and, and us as a board, yeah, I'm going to sit here and say, yeah, we did a really good job with the budget this year, um, and not overspending and, and being able to try to keep things, especially with everything that's going on with the new town office, with the legal fees that we had to incur, a bunch of stuff that we had to incur this year. I think we did a really good job.
I agree. A lot of it is out of our control.
We've, we've got some real good people, like you say.
Yep.
That, uh, are not spending things frivolously. And the other thing that people don't understand, it's quite a bit of that overage that, um, we can give back to the townspeople, offset the taxes. Um, this due to grants and they're not guaranteed every year. No, but our office and all our foremans, um, put in for grants. Joel puts in for quite a few for the roads and training and, uh, from culverts uh, to Siswood Bridges, that kind of stuff. Um, and they all add up. So I, I don't have a total number to take and say what this year's was, but, um, in the future, I'll take and see if I can come up with that.
Thank you. Anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.